The ordinance. It did, not too bad. Call the order. The regular meeting of the law in the city council. It is Wednesday, October 16th, 2024, 6:01 PM. We have a roll call, please, Shannon.
Uh, Councilor Burke?
Here.
Waller, Pierre, Nemee?
Here.
Bianic?
Here.
Mayor Wykow.
Here. Welcome, everyone. Invite everybody to Stanford, the pledge of allegiance as you're evil. See if I can do this. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the great flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and once again, welcome. Just... I think everybody knows this, but our meeting was moved to today to accommodate Monday's holiday, in which municipalities are not allowed to conduct business on a holiday. So, thanks, everybody, for coming on this odd night on a Wednesday. Council, you have in front of you the agenda, not the consent agenda, but the regular agenda. Were there any additions or changes, or is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Support.
Okay, moved by Councilor Waller, moved by Councilor Bianic, I believe.
Yes.
To approve the agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Uh, councilors, you have in front of you, excuse me, the items from the consent agenda. Item, uh, this evening. Are there any items you would like pulled and added to new business later? Or is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilor Waller, supported by Councilor Burke, that we approve the present agenda as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. Bear with me, and now at 6:03 PM, I'm going to recess the council meeting so that we can go into a hearing to address some nuisance issues. I think we got all my papers. I know, Jeff, is this you, or Ty gonna take the lead on this?
Well, here's the news question. There are pictures from today. Front one's pretty clear. Um, the...
Are we starting, no, we're starting at 2:15, 8th Avenue, North.
And the angle of the sun is not playing nice what we can with this afternoon, but...
Oh, well.
You may come off, but that's the... That's the reason for the port wall.
Council, your wishes, or anything you want to add, Jeff? And I don't believe that anybody here on behalf of the...
I haven't taken incremental pictures, but there's been some incremental work done on it where some section gets... There's been sections that are mobile, others have now grown, passed on again, and... And no time has it all been taken care of at the same time.
Did you receive any correspondence from the homeowner after they were sent off the notice?
Uh, I didn't receive any correspondence. I actually took the step of just of calling and reaching out, and the person said that they were making an attempt to get out of the homeowner.
Okay, I got a question. The back of the garage, is that better or worse?
See, the front looks fine, doesn't it?
The front looks fine, but I am...
I don't know if the back has changed.
It doesn't look like the back has changed, to me, saying, and I, you know, I don't know what... I don't know if it's what is wrong inside the house, but the back doesn't look changed at all.
No.
And I do not know if that... The taller stuff around the back of the, that's actually the garage, around the back of the garage. If those are weeds, or if that's some type of, some type of bush or plant.
Yeah, but I'm, like, I'm talking about this, whoops, excuse me, like, this almost looks worse than the first picture. It's, something's different in the driveway. I don't know what it is, but anyway, see what I'm saying? It's different than the picture we got before.
Yeah, and I don't know if the patchiness is not, that there's areas that are...
Two feet tall weeds in the driveway are not considered bush, and assuming you don't plant bushes near driveway.
And then that, I don't know what it is, but...
I was looking at this one.
It just looks nice, and...
Yeah, those are weeds.
Yeah, I, you know, but I was thinking on the driveway.
Yeah, I'll show you, be to declare and direct staff to proceed with abatement, or if you want to carry over yet another month, but I'm not sure. I think we've been fairly generous with the...
See, these are arguments 22nd, so I'll make a motion to abate.
Support.
Okay. Motion by Councilor Bianic, supported by Councilor Waller, to declare a nuisance and direct staff to proceed with abatement. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, and now we're at 205 Fourth Avenue North, Jeff?
Yeah, I wanted to take a quick sidebar here, um, because Mr. Fly walked in. Um, your neighbor is currently on the abatement list, so he's already been ordered to abate it, so we'll be cleaning. We'll be sending the cleaning company over to clear that. I don't know, Chief Teacher, was there any, anything towable last time you checked it?
No, I don't think you'll be able to call it, I'll pick truck.
Okay. Nice.
Thank you.
I know I would've been looking at the agenda for that one, correct?
Aye.
You would've been looking at, at the agenda to see if that one's on there?
He already was, we talked about it today at the post office.
Okay. So that one's, he's, he's been out of compliance.
You know, the sad part is he didn't even take advantage of the city cleanup for the door. I'm sorry. This still sitting right here. So, on this one, I can just speak real quick to my opinion on that. The backyard is not cleaned up. He has been, he has been working on the front, um, that I know, and that looks a lot better. Um, but the back is, has not changed at all, that I can see.
No, the front is, the front is fine, it's the back, that's...
Yeah, he took care of the front of the driveway.
Well, there, if you walk by and you look at the front, the porch is full of stuff. I don't know if that falls under this or not.
To be honest with you, Patty, I know what you're saying, but I don't think it does. Okay, I'm being honest, okay?
Yeah, and I, I don't know either. But I, I guess I would move to abate the back because this is carried over from last month, and nothing at all has been done to the back.
I'll support.
Okay, so moved by Councilor Waller, supported by Councilor Bianic to declare a nuisance specific to the backyard, and to direct staff to proceed with abatement. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, and all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion is carried. I don't see any other ones listed yet, so before I close the hearing, I just want to make sure you're, you're good to go.
Right.
Okay. It's 6:11 PM. Uh, the hearing is, uh, nuisance hearing is closed, and we are proceeding with the regular agenda. I didn't see any presentations that were scheduled.
None.
Okay. Uh, mayor and council member reports, I'll start with Councilor Bianic.
Okay, um, first of all, I want to thank everybody that attended Oktoberfest. Um, it was by far the best celebration we've had so far, and, uh, there was a lot of moving parts and a lot of volunteers that made it happen. So, uh, just thanks, everybody, for that. Um, and why not Fest is right around the corner, so if you feel like donating or sponsoring anything, we can find something for you to donate to or sponsor, so. Um, and we can also use volunteers. Um, a couple of questions I've got, real quick. On my way internet, I noticed a notice board downstairs, the outside one. There's a May 14th meeting notice in there still, and there's just a, a general blanket budget and personnel committee. I don't know if we necessarily follow those all the time, so you should probably keep that more up to date. I got numerous comments from the public on the new street sweeper, seeing that in town. Um, lots of, lots of rejoicing, I would call it, for lack of a better term. So, glad that's just about down. The, uh, the star on the water tower. Now, I know our last guy from People's Service kind of just took care of that, but having a, one leg of a star lit up looks terrible. I absolutely hate heights, and I will climb that son of a gun if I have to to get it working right. Or, I don't know what we gotta do. So, but it looks terrible, and everybody sees it, and it's been mentioned to me multiple times in the last two weeks, so.
I do think it's probably more likely to remove it than to get the whole thing right. It was kind of a, kind of a passion project for Dave Lullawine, he did have it right for a while, but it's... And I don't know what the, what the issues are, but it...
Well, I don't want to climb up there. And once I get up there and see what's wrong, and to climb down and get stuff to make and go back up, that's just even more daunting, so. The unplugging it's better than leaving it what we got, so. And then, uh, I know we've, we've zipped by the consent agenda, but I want to remind everybody about the New Range Copper Open House on Monday from 2:00 to 7:00, they're gonna be doing site tours, buses leaving on the hour.
Did I, did I see that apparently where, where everybody goes to is actually at their offices?
I believe so, I don't have the address handy.
There was a, yeah, Kensington.
Kensington, yeah.
Yeah.
And that, I think you head out on...
Doesn't go in the area?
Yeah.
Yeah. You head out on, on 135, going north and...
Yeah, it's, no.
You have to go White Lake.
Oh, is it on 666, isn't it?
Yeah. It's not 666.
No, 666 anymore.
Oh, it's not?
They changed it.
Oh.
So you go to White Lake and stuff.
65, 67.
Oh.
Yeah, it's not 666 anymore.
Hopefully, they have some guidance that...
I don't get over that way real often, so. Uh, I will put something online about that, too. Um, and then, uh, my last item here is, uh, in relation to the conversation I had with Mr. Stobly this afternoon. You know, if somebody comes to the desk down at City Hall, that maybe is not computer savvy, I'd like to see a way to put their request right into the citizen engagement part of the iWork system.
And I, I just took a computer and reformatted, blanked it out for desks.
Oh, perfect. Okay, then, that's all I have there.
Thank you. Councilor Nemee?
Yeah, I just have one question to ask the council. Can we change the meeting date in December? It's December 9th, and that's the levy in discussion. Can we change that date?
It's up to the council.
Yeah, that's why I'm looking. I'm trying to be effective with my communication.
Do we have to have it done by a certain time?
The levy, final levy has to be set by the end of the day on the 31st.
But the, the, the county notices for the budget will say, um, December 9th.
For the heat, for the budget hearing.
So...
Well, that's right.
You can certainly schedule another meeting, but we'll...
The Councilor Nemee is talking about not having the council meeting, but...
Well, I can't, I can't. I have a conflict at 5:30, and that's when the discussion for levy, is, is the levy gonna be passed that night, or is it just discussion?
I think we scheduled it to start at 6:00, because we'll have, we'll have the agenda meeting at 5:30, like we typically do.
Right.
And then we'll, rather than starting the council meeting, we'll open with, or I'll start the council meeting, and then move it into the, the hearing at 6:00.
Okay, so, I, we'll probably can get here by 7:00, maybe a hair after. I get here as fast as I can, but, uh, is, that's all right with the rest of the council members?
Yeah, like, like Jeff said, the, the budget, I, I know they call it truth in taxation, which is not really the, the correct nomenclature. Is, uh, the county will publish that at 6:00 PM on Monday, December 9th.
Okay, so is that all right, I'll be late? Because there won't be any voting on this, right?
Yes, and the wrong person who didn't count a lot.
I won't look at you.
I think, you know, as soon as you can make it.
Okay, I, yeah, it should be later than 7:30, but I will do my best to get here early. I know I can't make it by 6:30, I know that already, okay?
And maybe we won't even be here anymore, I think. Maybe we won't even be here at 7:30.
Boy, that's optimistic. I appreciate that.
Maybe I'll break pieces in for something. Okay, I just wanted to ask, so just so everybody knows, I'm gonna be late for that meeting. That's all I...
Councilor Waller?
Um, yeah, I want to thank Jeff for concluding your weekly meetings and the goals for the week coming up. To me, that's very helpful. Um, and then, if, you know, you're gonna be gone, then we'll know you're not going to be here. And then I saw that the Public Utilities is discontinuing the Energy Star rebate program. Now, has that already been discontinued, or is it going to be, so, so no more? That's too bad. I guess we, I, we should've had a little notice, because maybe I would've went and bought something to get the rebate. And then the last thing is for Matt, you were going to try to find out what's going on with the bridge west of town.
Yes.
Did you find out anything?
Yep, they, um, they are still working with the railroad to try and come to some sort of an agreement on how that's gonna go. So, they are, for the time being, everything is kind of staying the way it is, and the bridge is safe the way they've got it set up. It's inconvenient, it's kind of weird for you to drive through there, but, um, they're, they're not, continues to work with the railroad to try to resolve the issue, and that's, that's where it's at at the time.
So what is the issue?
Um...
Or is it really complicated?
I don't know, all of the internal issues, I just know when it involves the railroad, it, it does end up complicating things a little bit, so.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's an either of payment and losing a new block, and so.
Thanks, that's all I have.
Councilor Burke?
And speaking of Jeff's goals, anything on those storm sores that, those couple that we were looking at?
Um, I don't know, I was wondering, I'm, I'm not sure. They're, they're, and I, I say find solutions, but they're, they're gonna have to get dug up and replaced. If we don't find the best way to do that, then time's coming short here, so.
I'm real nervous about the guys coming up with the plows. I could see one going through the windshield, or, and winter's coming. Uh, the only other thing I have, three or four months ago, we approved a liquor license for some European cuisine. Was that just a practice in making motions, or is, is somebody eating that European, that, I haven't seen anything? Or is it not happening?
Yeah.
And I haven't heard a word since we made, gave them a liquor license.
So they're paying for a liquor license that they're not using.
They didn't get it yet, I don't think. They, they haven't gotten the license, because we, we did not pass the motion because there had to be a background check.
No, no, it was continued on that, that's...
Yeah.
We gave them one.
Isn't it currently a liquor license on a building they don't own, so it's...
Yeah, they didn't get us all the information, so we've never sent anything in, see? It's still pending on their end.
We don't close on that building until the 31st of October, so.
Okay, just asking, I haven't been there for months.
The, the closing date's still two weeks out, so.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all, the rest are answered.
Uh, compliments on the tables in the park. It's nice to have them, and it's nice to have the, the path, and I, I think that's gonna pay dividends for, for years for accessibility. Uh, I did want to let the council know that back in September, I did receive a, uh, update from, uh, Senator Klobuchar about her visit in June, or July, whatever it was. But she did note, uh, she did add a handwritten, handwritten note that she was impressed by Ballack's quick response plans, and let me know how we can help, so, uh, I think, I think, speaking for our city, I think we, we did some really good work during, during all that flooding, and kudos to, that was, much as the council likes to take some credit, that was, that was largely staff and, and our departments and our chiefs, and, uh, so kudos to everyone. It, it was noticed by, by influential politicians, like pastors around, people that are interested. Uh, and then thanks to Councilor, uh, Waller for covering for people last night. I'm doing just fine, but I do get tired at the end of the day, so we'll see how irritable I get before the end of this meeting. So I'm gonna move us on to new business. I, I did note that there is an A in the C, but no B, so we'll just pretend that, uh, there, that we, we pass B in, uh, without any discussion. Uh, item 9A, first reading of the updated ordinance 310 relating to parking of vehicles within the city of Ballack and opposing penalties for violation. So in order to discuss this, uh, doesn't mean that we're going to necessarily approve, but I would need a motion to hold the first reading.
I'll make a motion to hold officially.
Moved by Councilor, uh, Bianic, or by Councilor Nemee, all in favor of holding the first reading?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Now we can discuss, and I think Jeff kind of covered this a little, that the Planning Commission is kind of sending this forward as, as an option. I, I think Councilor, uh, Bianic was instrumental in, in raising this issue, although Councilor Waller talked about trucks and parking for a number of years, so.
I, I guess my only thing is that we haven't been enforcing our parking ordinances, so if we're going to enforce this ordinance, we need to enforce all of them. That, that's my statement. Otherwise, it looks like you're singling out, um, certain people.
And I do believe that the Planning Commission was sending this forward hoping to get some sort of reaction, and that if this, if this is the direction you wish to go, so it's really kind of in the council's, uh, court right now, is, is this how you want to proceed? If not, they, they would appreciate some sort of direction from you.
I think their, uh, update to our, our current ordinance was, uh, very effective and very simple, and, um, as, uh, the administrator stated in the agenda setting meeting, that it matches, uh, closely matches Gilbert's, so the police department would have the, you know, it makes it easier on them as well. And the quick background on this is that, um, I've had a bunch of citizens come to me and, uh, you know, not, not necessarily complaining, but, you know, they had a concern about large trucks taking up an entire city block. Um, it's, it's, uh, you know, visibility, and I, you know, it is, it's a visibility issue, and it's a noise heating up for an hour in the morning, at 3 o'clock in the morning, when you've got small children trying to sleep, and people that are, you know... And as my note to the, um, Planning Commission with, uh, and I do want to say, I did, uh, I did email the mayor on this before sending it to the Planning Commission to, uh, make sure I wasn't stepping out of line. And it took me a while to get this done, because I didn't want to just present a problem and not have some sort of a solution. Um, so talking with Lauren and the, uh, few others in town, you know, offering an alternative place to park was part of this. Um, and other cities do have that as well. The, uh, you know, I drew a quick Google map here, and the only thing Lauren corrected me on is the fact that I have one truck parked back here. He said good truck drivers can park three back there. So, um, I'm not a truck driver, never claimed to be, so, uh, that was the only, uh, you know, the, the only comment that he had. And I, it's, it's not a reoccurring problem in town with multiple issues, it's, there's, there's a couple. However, I don't want to cut somebody off at the knees that drives truck, and that's how they make their living. So that was why I wanted to make sure there was a solution to that. And I think, I think the Planning Commission did a wonderful job. Unfortunately, I had another commitment that, and I could not make it, um, to be at that meeting, but I think that their, their simple update to our ordinance was, uh, is, like, I think it, it solves the, solves the problem, in my opinion, than the problems that were presented to me.
Um, the only thing is that they had Broadway Street instead of May, um...
And we were gonna, we were gonna make sure that we corrected that when we did.
21C. It is unlawful to park a commercial vehicle on Broadway Street for longer than two hours, which I think...
Or are you just looking at the double example?
Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I put...
Yes, which is removed from the, the, the updated draft of the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, these I copied and pasted out of the neighboring city, city codes, just to make it easier on the Planning Commission still.
Any further discussion? I would need a motion to dispense with the first reading.
I'll make a motion to dispense with the first reading.
Moved by Councilor Nemee, is there support?
I'll support.
Councilor Bianic, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. So our next meeting will have the second reading. There's always an opportunity if you have concerns and want some sort of changes. Item 9B C, whatever you wish to call it, Resolution 2024-16, that's 16, approving a lease purchase agreement for the street sweeper. And I think that's the most paper we've got in our packet tonight, is that, that agreement.
Still moved.
Support.
Moved by Councilor Burke, supported by Councilor Nemee, and we trust that our city attorney has read this very carefully.
If you look at my opinion at the end of the, it just says that we have the authority to act, and I'm not gonna opine if it wasn't a good deal or not.
I do have a question about this. Um, does our insurance cover the equipment if it is stolen or damaged? Jeff?
Our trust will cover the equipment if it's stolen or damaged?
If it's damaged, I don't believe it would if it's stolen, because it really isn't ours.
Because, I mean, we're totally responsible according to this agreement. I mean, chances are it would be stolen, but...
I don't see a T, uh, policy covers stolen. Oh, I would think it does, but we can, we can check that.
Then you might, yeah, you might want to clarify.
That was my only question, out of all of this big pack of paper.
Kudos to you.
The only comment I have is, uh, can we do, send this tomorrow? I got a phone call about this today, wondering where the heck it's at, so I'd like to see...
I, I was planning on sending it in tonight, actually.
Oh, even better.
Yeah, the...
Okay, I can kind of sign, so if you put it in front of me, I'll scratch something out.
What is it?
Left-handed.
No, no, that's...
The, the bank assured me that, no, you don't, you don't need council proof on the, we just, just sign the resolution and send it in.
I think in the future...
If it come from their side, I don't believe they did, but...
Right. In the future, I think we should just make sure that that's all included with our approval of anything, the paperwork to go with it.
Thank you.
Anyways.
Okay, there's a motion, it's court number four, I sense you must be ready to vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Oh, back off. Roll call.
Councilor Burke?
Aye.
Aye. Nemee?
Uh, Bianic?
Aye. Mayor Wykow?
Aye. Motion is carried, and the resolution is adopted.
Good catch.
Almost, almost got there. All I had to do was actually read my own notes. All right, 9D, approval of leave of absence request for Heather Solon, in keeping with department policy.
Still moved, request.
Support.
Moved by Councilor Burke, supported by Councilor Waller, to approve the leave of absence request?
And I hope she won't be out for 12 months.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion is carried. Item 9E, approval of pay application number four for the recreation area. We talked a little about this in the agenda meeting. Council's got any questions, certainly be appropriate. And Matt explained that there's... sent in any questions, certainly be appropriate. And Matt explained that there will be yet one more payment and then the, then the retainage, correct?
That should be it, yep.
Okay, so this is two hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-four cents.
I'll make a motion to approve. Support.
Move by Councilor Meeby, supported by Councilors Waller and Berg, whichever Shannon wrote down. Any further discussion? Hearing on all favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Item nine F, discussion and action on a zoning amendment request. As Jeff explained, the Planning Commission considered the option for rezoning the so-called Levoker fields or at least certain parcels. This is what they came up with. And as Jeff said, if you wish to proceed, we would have to hold a hearing. What were you thinking, Jeff, before our November meeting or would we do it separate? Your wishes?
I make a motion to resone, that would be to resone or to hold the public hearing?
Hold the public hearing.
Okay, I'll make a motion to hold the public hearing to look at zoning this property.
See, what is our November meeting?
It's the twelfth because the Veterans Day is Monday, so we moved to Tuesday, which we did at the beginning of the year, unlike the, this Monday, so.
So the motion will, will incorporate that into the motion that Councilor Waller took made?
I'll support.
Supported by Councilor Beyondich. Further discussion? And then if we have the hearing that day, then action on the, would be during, later during the meeting.
Correct. And so now we'll, we'll advertise the public hearing. We'll send notices to the funding propulents for the public hearing. The council is required to hold a public hearing. The public hearing is not a referendum or a, or a public vote on the rezoning. I don't know if this one will be controversial or revolting for any reason. But the point of the public hearing is for the council to take inputs before they make their decision. It's not a, a year or a day problem, folks attending the public hearing.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both?
Never mind.
Nine G.
Don't forget to discuss, yeah, forget it.
Did, did you have something on that?
Yes, I did.
Go ahead.
Never mind, know too late.
Well, we haven't moved on, so.
Well, I wanted something on the background as far as what is commercial storage?
It would be like those little things you rent.
Sort of like the ones that buy the apartments?
Yeah.
Because we just turned this away from the highway up there by Clay Ridge, you know. But now we're going to allow him to put it on the other side of town.
We turned away the sale, not the zoning part of it, right?
This, this is, that was city-owned land that he wanted to purchase to put those. And this is land that Steve owns. This is his land.
Yes.
And he's going to build a campground on it and he wanted some storage to go for.
And what I'm saying, we didn't allow it on the east end, but we're allowing it on the west end.
And there's a, so, and then there is kind of a, a fine but important distinction there. When it comes to the use of the property, when the council owns the property, you can choose to sell or not sell to, for, for whatever reason. Once somebody owns the property, the, the, the onus is really on, if, if they request a zoning change, land use, land use law, whatever, is, is heavily tilted in favor of, of the property owner. Once, once they own it, they can request, request it to be rezoned unless, unless there's a strong reason to not rezon it. It's, it's kind of their property, right? It's probably a little bit strong term, but it's.
So to, to Danny's question, I think it's good. So, how do I word this? Just because we approved this doesn't mean that he can have storage there. There is an open discussion there, right?
Tonight or when it's all said and done?
Before.
When, when it's, when it's all said and done, when the zoning is, if the council proceeds with rezoning it, then the commercial storage is a allowable use property.
But it's not done yet.
No, we do, all we do is schedule the hearings.
Schedule the hearings. So we can, we can change that part, right, at the hearing?
And we can ask the owner what his intentions are.
Yeah, because I think that's a good thing that he brought up.
Thanks for stopping me. Okay, nine G, discussion and action on health insurance options. I think Jeff, you were looking for some sort of guidance in terms of process.
And right now we do have, so our, 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 our health insurance is through the same agent that we have for, for our L M C I T insurance, for our liability and other insurance, which we're required to have an agent for, for that. So we use, so, so we use Marshall McLennan Agency for, for our L M C I T stuff. We also use them for health insurance and have for, for some time. Several years ago, we switched to, when they first rolled out the Affordable Healthcare Act plans, Obamacare plans, you know, by a couple different names, had switched to that for big savings from our previous insurance, which was still through our agent, but purchased through a pool since we were part of the Northeast Service Cooperative. And at that time, it was a pretty substantial drop in price to go with the, with the plan we have now. It's come up, it's, so right now it's, it's kind of both on the Personnel Committee's plate and on the Budget Committee's plate. So just kind of, kind of brings it to a head that there should, you know, there should probably just be some, some council action on what direction do we want to go here. There's, there are other plans available. Time is, for a renewal, time is really short in order to make a decision on, on that. It's really tight. But as a whole, if the council wants to look at other insurance options, there would be everything from looking at different options within our current, within our current plan or with, with our current agent, or looking for and going up for bids for other agents. All of those, all of those options are used for stuff like this.
And based on my experience, Jeff, when you say the time is tight, I think that's an understatement. A lot of renewals, it used to be you, you had toward the, close to the end of the year for your renewals. Now I believe that most groups have to make a decision either by the early part of November or even in late October. I don't know what the, the specifics are for this particular coverage. So I just want to caution people that making a change now without even knowing what that change might be, as Jeff said, it's, it's going to be really tight. But, which is not, is not to say that we don't need to take a look at what the options are. I think that's, it's probably overdue to, to revisit that. But as far as I know, we haven't talked to the Marshall McLennan. I believe that form, used to be the Greater Minnesota Insurance Agency, was acquired by Marshall McLennan. I think there was another acquisition somewhere along the line in, in there as well. But they've not been asked what other alternatives there might be. As Jeff said, the, the Service Co-op has a pool that a lot of various cities are participating in. You could look at, and I don't know who, who you is, if it's Personnel Committee or, and we should decide who, who is doing what.
Well, I, I, I think it's the Personnel Committee's decision as far as, like, what type of plan, what type of pay. I don't know. Personnel Committee, is that right?
I would argue that it's a full council decision, but, you know, coming reckoned with.
And I would too, and I think it certainly affects the budget.
Okay, I mean, it definitely does.
Because considering it's this end and this end, we're all tied together. I think it's, he's right, it's a council decision.
Okay. Because, well, one thing is, I mean, I think we need to look elsewhere. Usually when your policy is up for renewal, you get notice. You did not get notice yet about your policy for this year?
I got the notice of the renewal premiums, like, not sure what the date gives out.
Okay, because normally I, I just know with my employer, we would always get, you know, there was usually a couple of plans to choose from. So then we would get like that, kind of that deadline. You'd get like six weeks or whatever. I just like, Kathy had given me some information last night. She gave it to the council members that were here. And I noticed like quite late, like their premium for family is like eight hundred dollars less a month than what we're paying. So I think we need to look into other companies or, I, I think we need to go out there and see what else is available. I mean, if not for this year, then maybe for next year?
And, and so, so really at this point in the, in the year, we, we kind of have two or three weeks to make a decision, or a year and two or three, two or three weeks to make a decision for the following year. But then there is also a, an opening window in, that will come in 2025. So we, we couldn't necessarily choose everything, get everything wrapped up in January, February of 25 for 2026. So there's, if the way to open it opens up. But that would give us time to kind of go through, figure out what process we want to use, if it's, if it's going to be within the agency or for a different agency. It's kind of, it's somewhat simplified with, with our current plans and plans like ours on the ACA plan. There, there, there's no shop, well, you could shop around for an agent based on service if you, if you felt those warranted. But on price, they're, they're, the prices are set by the, by the federal government. It's, it's a, the, the premium for this per, for a person at this age is X. And that is what it is regardless of, regardless of your, your agent, within those ACA plans. If there's other types of plans or types of companies out there, that would be a little more complicated. But they, they do take care of the price, the price question for you basically.
Do we know with the, the information that Councilor Meeby shared, what those, are those cities that are being compared to, are they part of the Service Co-op pool? Do we know where they're getting theirs from? That would seem like a good place to start.
So I, and I apologize, I apologize, I said too, because the information was for twenty-four, you know, that's the information. And now Jeff has got, it's not quite completed, but it's for twenty-five. Okay, so he's going to give that.
Yeah, so this is the most current and with the communities that we looked at last year.
I guess.
Oh, that's right. Appears they didn't participate in the, this is from the League Minnesota Cities Survey. And it's a voluntary, just to make your, your numbers. Looks like some of them did.
I mean, right now, the insurance, I mean, and I don't know what we can do. But right now, we pay more for insurance premiums in this little town than the federal government pays for federal employees' insurance. And it's just, I mean, and it's nobody's fault but the insurance companies as far as I can see. And I, I think we just have to explore all the options out there to try to get this cost down. And I guess it's kind of misleading, this information, because it says family out of pocket. But it's not the family that's paying that out of pocket. It's the city that's paying that out of pocket. And I'm not sure if everybody on the council is aware of that or not. At least for our town. Maybe some of the towns have them pay that, but our town pays it.
Well, I think, given the data, I think it's a little late, but I think it needs to be explored for next year.
I think starting now is probably not a bad idea.
Because I mean, we can't get something and it's hard to say, you know. But I think it needs to start. So would the council direct Jeff to do that? Is that what Jeff should check into these different options?
I would suppose so.
I would, I would make a motion that we direct city staff to explore options not only within the current agency, but outside agencies for options for health insurance.
Support.
Can I clarify that? Staff, you said S T A F.
Mm-hmm.
Make the choice just back then or you?
City staff.
Okay, this one, make sure.
And just to kind of set expectations on that, so I'll start with fleshing out more of the material you have, just so we have a baseline. We're not going to, I don't think we'll be able to get a change for 2025. But then there's also not going to be final options to choose from in December of 25 or January, or December 24, January 25, February of 25. They're not going to be out yet. So there will be proper working updates in the meantime. But you won't have late winter, early spring actual options to look at.
My understanding is all these different groups and they should already know what the 2025 premiums are. That typically goes out anywhere from August to September depending on who your provider is. So at least we can have some comparisons with 2025 numbers, which, which I, I think I would find use, although I won't be here in 2025, making sure that we're comparing light numbers. Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Is everybody comfortable with that? And you got the motion then? I should have asked you if you got a couple.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Uh, nine H, discussion and action on building and security projects. Jeff, you touched on this in the agenda meeting.
Yeah, there's kind of some helpful overlap with us being put on the agenda and then us having the meeting with the presentation from I triple R last night in time to, to discuss it tonight. So we've discussed these separate projects for the past months to years, and whether or not we want to go through with purchasing a camera for the outside or redoing the, the steps or redoing the doors. We've kind of picked one back and forth between, do we want to go ahead and get some of this stuff done? Or do we want to look big picture and kind of, kind of put a larger project together, go after other funding and just kind of get it done in one fell swoop. So, so the, the question really comes down to, do you want me to get more bids on cameras and door locks and front steps and all that type of stuff? Or work on a plan for getting a, a project or a bid spec to take care of that stuff? We've, we've kind of talked at length that these projects quickly kind of fold over into, you know, it's hard to do the, it's hard to do the front steps without considering the doors and the door opening for handicap accessibility. And it's hard to really go and do handicap accessibility when you're, and then also trying to fit, are we going to, are we still going to be putting keys in locks or are we going to swipe cars? And then it just kind of mushrooms.
And my opinion is I would like to see the whole package of improvements. I don't, I don't want it to be bit pissed out because then who knows if it's going to be coherent with, you know, what, what was done already. That's how I feel about it.
And I, I agree with Patty. And then after listening to the I triple R B, it, it almost sounds like there's funding available or grants available to get some of this done. So I, I, I agree with the whole package because you could run into problems doing one thing and then run into problems with another. If you're doing the whole thing, you can catch up hopefully before things are too far along.
And that's the same, I'm looking right now. We've got about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in our accounts right now of A R P funding and the Public Safety Aid grants. That's money we've got sitting there that could be matched fifty percent to the I triple R B. Not to mention you get into age-friendly Minnesota grants, you get into some other D grants. And the I triple R B has a grant writer grant that they'll match a one-to-one to seek out these other grants from outside of the agency, as we learned last night. But I think a, a package deal would only make sense, especially because, yeah, the steps look terrible right now and they're becoming a safety hazard. But if we go and spend twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars on new steps, well, now we didn't comply with ADA compliancy, which even if we didn't have to do that, it's still the right thing to do. It, it's, it's, I mean, that's a no-brainer to me. But if we tie it in with building access control, we can get a new door, we can have the opener put in, all of that at the same time. So we're not pouring concrete, chiseling up concrete to put a stanchion in. It, it just, it would, if we don't do, if we put the cart in front of the horse, we're gonna be moving backwards again. We've got this money that we have to use and we have to use soon. I don't even know if it has to be used soon, or it has to be allocated and spoken for sooner than later. But, and we've got our pavilion doors, which is a polling place and does not have ADA compliance. And if you're gonna put door locks in with scanners, we might as well put them at the public works ground. So all of our buildings, you gotta have one key to whoever needs to as, as an employee. And you make it as a package deal, it only makes sense.
What kind of timeframe makes sense for proceeding if that's the, I, I'm not, I, I wasn't here, so I don't know what, what that particular grant program, what kind of timeframe they have. Is this something that has to be done in the next couple of months, or?
Uh, no, we want to, so for the ARP fund, we need to designate that for something, there's, and I think I wanted just calling it basically the standard deduction, because it was so close to, that's what they kept explaining it as. Because we had gotten a hundred and nine thousand for, for, from ARP. And you're supposed to say exactly what you were using for that, for public safety, uh, public, public health type things. If you got a lot of money, you actually have to say, we, we bought this, we paid for that, so we built this. For the smaller malls, they, you basically sign a thing saying that we're gonna use this money for, for public health purposes. And you see anything in the building, it's public health and safety. But it's, so it's, it, it's sitting there, but we should, should still move pretty quickly on that. To get the project together, that kind of depends on do we want to, it'll, you know, come up at, at future meetings. We had discussed a, a proposal from, from the engineer to go and give us, give us the engineers' look at the building and, you know, give us some, an assessment of the building and give some priorities and maybe some prices. We want to look at doing it through some other type of general contractor with the, I don't know that we're gonna find a contractor that covers those things. I don't know that that's, that's really the main strategy that's gonna work. So it's really, are we gonna do it, are we gonna do it in-house and try to put some of these projects together and talk with different vendors? Or put it under an agreement with our engineer or consultant?
So if we put it under the engineering firm, would they like kind of be the coordinator of all these different things that have to be done?
Yes.
And I think if we, if we do that, then it'll get done instead of having different vendors. Get one person to be in charge and, you know, duh, 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 that gets done.
Or city staff getting sidetracked with other things?
Right.
And at a bare minimum, we would definitely want the engineer to look at the ADA compliance and accessibility stuff. And once you do that and bring them in, it just makes sense to have them oversee the project.
So is there general consensus that want the scope of these projects or be, what I've, what I've heard was certainly the stuff relating to the entrance, the pavilion, public works.
The office spaces also, right? They should have to be thought.
And that's what we originally looked at that, you know, from a strategic planning standpoint and utilizing some of these other spaces. You know, because I don't even know if we know who's all got keys to these buildings at this point in time. And it's, it's definitely a security issue. But the nice thing is, I mean, it, it wouldn't pay to put all new entrances and doors and, and put key locks in there again. It's 2024 and we're not, I don't think moving backwards in time would make any sense. So, but the nice thing about doing something with, i- if, if all of a sudden our, our price tag exceeds the, you know, what we can match IRRB with and everything with, with polling place and every whatnot, you can always phase those in. You know, so if you get a, if, if we get a tenant in the second floor office space that requires access control, at that point in time, we can add it. And, you know, until, so I mean, we can space that, that funding out if there is a gap. Or hopefully we have enough money to just cover the whole works, that's in my opinion.
So would you like this in the form of a motion, I bet? Are you comfortable?
Motion or cons, well, is, is it a good summary that the intent is to use our, use our engineer as a consultant to oversee this project? So staff duty in the time would just be to kind of compile notes on what these different aspects are as a start. So we, we can start the, start the notes of steps, doors, the pavilion, and the fact that it's polling place, all that type of stuff. Get that together for preparation for the engineer to take a look. And that's even longer, but that's.
And also the, the commitment of the council that the purpose of the ARP funds will be as, as a match for this. So you're gonna have to come back to us later and ask for another motion, how we're gonna use the ARP funds, we can roll it all together.
And, and the safety, there was a safety.
A couple of other grounds. Okay, somebody prepared to make that as a motion?
I will make that as a motion.
Off support.
Counselor beyond it, supported by Counselor Neemee. And is everybody comfortable with what we're voting on here? Jeff, do you feel this, oh, Matt. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion is carried. It was a good discussion, apparently last night's session was very useful. I know it started with Counselor Beyond it seeing them do a presentation and, and I saw one and we both agreed that this needed to be for the council. Then I saw it a second time.
The state of the range was good too, to kind of recap that out as well.
So I really appreciate that, that the agency was willing to send staff here to make that, that happen. Uh, item 9I, review of snowflowing and ice control policy. We talked about this a little earlier. I know what we've often done in the past is formed a, just a small working committee, ad hoc committee to, to put something together. If people are feeling that there needs to be some updating, rather than, I don't know if it fits in with the committee. So if you, if you feel that this could benefit from a, a discussion, that there's a, or if you think it's just fine the way it is.
At, at this time, I would say it's fine the way it is, but if people start, citizens start coming to us that they're not happy with that snow and ice removal policy, then we should meet as a committee and discuss it at that time.
And may I add to that, Patty, what you do, that the businesses know what our snow policy is, you know, letter in the mail, or something they gotta know.
Good. So do we want to, just do a motion that we're?
We just had a discussion on here.
Okay, all right. We discussed it.
I guess just to direct the staff to, I don't know if they should send the policy to each business?
Do we need a motion for that? Because I, I'll make a motion and.
I think Jeff already wrote it down.
And splitting here a little bit, but I got it as an inch of property on us, we do have some nod.
Sure.
Good. Okay, so that actually completes our new business, believe it or not. Uh, this is the opportunity now, item 10, open public forum. If members of the audience have things they want to bring forward, attention to the council. As we always say, we can't necessarily act on anything tonight, but we appreciate being updated on what's going on. So, Mr. Stably.
Three things. We talked about two before that. Hard thing that they did when they drilled, when they went on the sweeper, they took all the material off. I mean, they actually broke it off. Kind of, it ain't a very good patch in there, is what I, I guess what I'm saying. Second thing is before you got the sweeper, at the bottom of the hill, you have a storm coming out of there and you can drive by and look. I don't know, that, that pipes are about that big, but you only got about that much room in there. It should be dug out.
You talking about pilots?
At least if you get a hard rain, it, it might push some of that sand out of there.
Right, at pilots, right before you get to where narrows, that?
Yeah, there's, there's a bent, there's a bent pole that had a, uh.
A little reflective diameter?
Yeah. Right on there, and you're gonna see some kind of tall weeds, but people look in there. And then the other one is kind of a question, I know they came wrong and they were looking at these water shut-off sticking up and on road. Are they, are they gonna do anything with them?
Yeah, we have to take kind of drastic measures on that. They're, they're adjustable by, they're, they're threaded, so you, just, you're, you're supposed to just be able to screw them and, you know, set the height when you, when you do the project. But they're encased in the.
Tar.
In, in the asphalt. So we're gonna have to do either saw cutting or use a special cutter, cut around it, then do it, then drop them down. It's been, it's been kind of stumped in the, the utility guys.
Yeah, there's, there's a few of them around town that stick up pretty good, you pull through them.
Well, they identified nine, they had, they got two that they could screw down and drop them flush.
That's all I got.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Well, how many more years before we get a new P A system here?
And the equipment's back there, I think we're close, aren't we?
The amplifier doesn't work, so they're ordering one, should be in next week.
Well, I've been hearing that now for.
Another new part, no.
And another thing is, you know, every other town, when they set the preliminary budgets, they get all these reports and that, we don't get nothing. A lot of people, they don't know how much the preliminary budget went up, which will affect your taxes, if it's gonna be cut or not. But, you know, every town, Old Iron, Gilbert, Evolent, Virginia, they all got newspapers. We don't have nothing. Right, Jeff?
I, my honest opinion is we send out way more budget material than pretty much anything else that's on, we, we don't publish the paper, but.
No, we never did nothing in the newspaper, every other town, before you set the preliminary budget, they had it, you know, how much is gonna go up there?
Well.
Yeah, and, and everybody gets a, oh, I'm sorry, by the way.
Oh, well, I was just gonna say, for one thing, we don't have a city newspaper. Another thing is you can come up and get a copy of the budget. It is available online, but I know you don't, you know, you don't usually go on the computer.
I don't wanna.
Yeah, but you can come, right? They can come to City Hall and get a copy of the preliminary budget, yeah.
John, you get it every year, because you're always here, you know? And it's, it's, it's a nice packet, you talk, Jeff does it with the budget and explains what's going on on the one page, so you can see it on the next page. And then Patty brought up, you know, you know, the town newspaper. I just, something to think about.
Yeah, just pass.
The system, this could go on for what, years? Or every.
Nine months.
It's all the old one.
But yeah, John, pass the word, if people do want to know about the preliminary budget, to come up and get a copy up here.
I will say, it's very hard to find the other cities' budgets, even on their website. Because I like to look and compare to other local cities and it's, it's very difficult to find that information.
I know I was looking for some last year and I was never able to find it.
I think the city made some very nice improvements this year myself.
Thank you. I think we've really moved forward with our amenities this year. Um, the town looks a lot better, in my opinion. So thank you for saying that.
Anything else, Jeff?
Hope the street tolls open, that's all I got to say.
We all do, we all do.
I just want to double check, you, you're talking about like where the MPCA does their test boring sites? That's who you're talking about, that guy?
Yeah, there's a, there's a wrong bowl that's.
Go by Luke's?
Probably about that big.
Okay.
All the, all the edges are crumbled down.
Brian, anything you wanted to?
Yeah, I, I just had a question on your snowplow policy. It says states, the streets and avenues will receive priority, where is Voyagers in this policy?
Streets and avenues.
It would be considered a street, so we're just, we were just saying before we do the alleys, we'll do streets and avenues, so those will be streets. We did have.
It used to say that as soon, oh, that's when the town of White was doing it, I definitely.
There was language that just coordinated that when white townsfolk left their garage to go up there, we left, so we did our part and they did theirs.
So do we just do like those main, the main route and then head up to Voyagers instead of doing all the streets in town and avenues before we head to Voyagers?
Uh, no, so one person, when they start, one person goes up to, to Voyagers, does the annex area, so Voyagers, uh, Woodlands, Residence Center.
And then also I had a question, I know like last year, there was a few times I've seen that Voyagers was pub and the town was not. I'm just curious about that.
I guess the only time that I can think of that I'm aware of that is we did have issues with ice where we went and salted and sanded pretty heavily up there. Because we had gotten calls that people just, and it was fine in town, but people literally could not get up some of the hills, so we had salt and sand. But I guess I can't speak on the other ones, I'm not, I don't know the specifics on.
Yeah, I just noticed as well, because I'm a poller, but I just noticed that there was a few times that Voyagers was pub, but the town wasn't.
Yeah, I don't have the, I don't have the.
Yeah, I don't know the dates, no, but I just, like I said, I was just thinking about that, for the, for the reading that.
It's certainly not the policy.
Yeah.
Anything else, Brian?
And then just hit on that, the parking policy, I mean, I agree on the truck in town, but I just feel you're just singling out this couple of individuals, you know? I just, I mean, I think there's other issues in town that should be addressed as well, the cameras parked in the streets and trailers and boats and everything is just kind of a, that's, you know, it's a touchy subject, but. He's a hardworking guy, you know, was just trying to survive and, I mean, I've been in the industry before and, and it's nice to be able to bring the truck home, so he can just go up, fire it out and leave right away instead of buying a personal truck, driving to wherever, you know, and then his days are longer due to that and, and everything else. But like I said, that's just, that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
I got one more thing. If I were a post office, where we park, you go line the front for behind, for, that's what on, that's the goal on all, everybody has, where do you park here?
I just asked Jeff that this afternoon, and it's going to be, the, the blue will be in front of the sign.
Front of the sign.
Yeah. I guess we're getting the paint. We, we did get permission from Mid Dot, we, we can, we can paint that.
A lot of people park right there, they don't have a handicap sticker, you see.
No, we, we specifically asked if we could paint it ourselves, because they don't need to be in any hurry, so.
So are you saying it's going to be east of the sign or west of the sign?
West.
West of the sign, okay.
So when you're parked at the blue, you'd be looking at the sign.
The sign, okay. That makes more sense.
I told you it would come up tonight, didn't I? Anything else? Well, counsel, I have seven, ten PM, is there a motion to adjourn?
So vote.
For the council, for the council meeting, all in favor?
Aye.